Your right to remain in the place.
The pledge made to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the voting meeting. The anxious attention of school district board directors. I would like to announce that we are in executive session discussing personnel issues. And before we commence tonight's business, we had an incident. And sometimes you feel that you've had exemplary performance by your personnel and then it just goes sour. Mr. Bill Snyder, one of our employees and an exer of alum from the class of eighty-seven, collapsed with a heart attack in our cafeteria on the first of December. Fortunately, the personnel in the cafeteria summoned our school nurse, Teresa Nab, and the athletic trainer Audrey Dickman. Through their efforts, they did revive Mr. Snyder, our employee, and he was transported to the hospital, where he in fact improved enough that he was discharged. He later, on December tenth, died in his sleep. So while the net result is the loss of a valued employee and we extend our condolences to Mr. Snyder's family, I think we also must recognize Ms. Nab and Ms. Dickman for their efforts, which in fact were successful and unfortunately then reversed themselves. So I'm proud of their actions and I mourn Mr. Snyder's loss, Mr. Snyder's family's loss. If we can keep them in our minds, please. Moving on. Jamie Sussinger is going to talk about money.
Good evening. Everyone should have in front of them the latest information regarding refinancing opportunities and steps. Obviously, the last time we were here, we authorized acceptance of the first step with the bank loan with customer bank. We're pleased to report that we're getting very close to settling on that. That'll happen in the first week of January. We'll have some final arrangements such as deciding what documentation we'll do soon, but we're moving along on that. The second thing we're here to talk about, most importantly, is the bank loan RFP that we solicited. We received proposals at the end of last week. The idea was to refinance a portion of the series of two thousand and ten as step two. The goal was to keep it within a certain range, to make it bank-qualified, and ultimately see what kind of savings we can generate by the bank loan market. I think the most important part of this is we asked the local regional banks to provide us rates, provide us a maximum rate on certain public debt, but also hold the interest rates until your next meeting in January. So January two thousand fifteen, on the thirteenth. So we have a hedge against interest rates rising depending on the conditions on the bond market. If we choose to move forward with this as a refinancing of the bond issue, if interest rates go up, we can still go back and look at bank loan from the proposals that we received. So that said, I'll talk about the numbers that we received and how that works for you. Really, if you turn to the third page, that's really the whole nuts and bolts of this. The first two pages are your outstanding debt that we've seen before. The next page is the current interest rate environment. We're in a low, variable interest rate environment in there for a while. So it's obviously a good time to finance what we've been talking about. But what we received is on page three, which is a chart with the blue, red, and green. Similar to what we did before, we asked the banks to give us proposals either fixed for the full term. In this case, we've also asked them to give us a fixed rate for a number of years, whether it was five, seven, or ten, with some sort of variable rate calculation. This particular option goes out a little bit longer than the previous one. So we couldn't get essentially great fixed rates for the full term, but we did get some. That would be the blue box on top. We received fixed rate proposals from Univeast and Metro Bank. And the best proposal for that option was two point nine nine percent. So keep that in back of your mind. The other options that the banks offered-
What term?
Oh, fixed for the full term. So that goes out to two thousand twenty-seven. So it's about, you know, yeah, it's a long time. Good rate, but not as good as what I'm going to talk about. So we did receive other options. These are what we call fixed variable rate options. In some cases, depending on how the math works, you may be better off taking a fixed rate for a shorter term, but then having a maximum rate from years, from years eight to maturity. And that happened here, actually. If you look at the first two options, this is from this bank or Thompson, Tompkins, this bank. They offered fixed rates for either seven years at two point four or five percent or for five years at one point nine percent. Again, not as good as we did last time, but this is a longer term. The key here is the bank was willing to offer us a maximum rate after the fixed rate periods are up at three point eight percent. So at no time after the fixed rate period can the interest rate go higher than three point eight percent. What does that mean to you? Well, that is shown on column ten and column eleven. As an example, we look at two things. Obviously, we don't know where rates are going to go after years five or years seven. What we can, what we can do is estimate. So what we do is we take a historic average of the last ten years of whatever the indices they offered. In this case, the bank offered LIBOR. Based on historic rates, they offered a one point seven five percent plus LIBOR, one-month LIBOR. Historically, one-month LIBOR of the last ten years is one point eight percent. Currently, one-month LIBOR is about point two-five percent. It's very low. So we want to take a historic average, which is relatively conservative. We make that assumption. Let's say the interest rate from after the fixed rate period is up, we need that three and a half percent. So overall, if you assume those two things, the overall interest rate on that new loan could be two point seventy percent. That's obviously better than two point nine nine that we received on the full fixed rate period. What's the worst-case scenario? If we hit three point eight percent thereafter, it's about two eighty-four. So you're actually better off taking on the variable rate, fixed variable rate option than taking the fixed rate option. So we toss those aside. What does that mean dollars and cents? We reran the numbers based on these, this assumption. In my opinion, we go with the seven-year option. You're a little bit less interest rate risk. You think rates are going to go up in the future. It's very, very close between the five and seven-year option. So we chose the seven-year in this case. If the interest rates stay where they are on the first seven years, which they will, and if it gets the worst-case scenario, three point eight percent thereafter, the savings on that step would be nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So now you're guaranteed to generate that amount of savings because we asked the banks to hold the rates for that period of time. What happens if the rate is the historic average, that three point five percent thereafter? You get about a million dollars of savings. And then I also ran numbers to assume, let's say it just turns into three and a quarter thereafter. That gets you about one point one million dollars. So again, we tried to give you some ideas of what it'll look like, but guaranteed with the Vist option, you generate nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. As a comparison, we now look at the bond market. We're getting much closer to when we can actually sell bonds, when we want to sell bonds, which would be sometime early next year. Rates have actually come down over the last couple of weeks. So based on current markets, no fluff in there, the bond issue is one point one million dollars of savings on this particular option. So my recommendation would be, at this point, to look into continuing moving forward with the bond market. And if there's some change, we have the hedge. We're guaranteed taking the Vist option and generating nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars worst-case scenario to hedge the market by having this potential opportunity here. We miss that. I took a breath of seconds. Does anyone have any questions?
You base in the, with the bond issue, based on today's-
Yes.
Today's bond rate. So say it's like two point one something.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah, it's low.
Yeah, so it is very low. Say it goes up to two, two-five, just as an example. That would eliminate that savings and it would just back into the bank debt.
Yeah, I'll point that out. Actually, if you look in the bottom left-hand corner of this page, I figured out a present value. If rates go up by ten basis points from where they are today, so point one oh percent, the savings would go down by eighty-eight thousand dollars. So, you know, you get a twenty percent increase, that's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars or a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that's really what we're looking at here. So if you see any major changes.
All in fees, that's out the door?
It's all, this is net of everything. So this is for dollars and cents, but you have to, it takes into account state aid and everything else.
And then last question, for the bond, for the bond itself, would we, as far as when? The time when we're able to do that, when is that, when is that rate or that, when does that become effective? Because we know what we have here with the, with the bank loan. I mean, that's, that's a nice fall position.
The plan here is, we have a couple of things we need to do administratively. One, we need to get your bond rating updated. It will be the same with what you have, but Ann and I will be on a phone call next week to talk to S and P. That will start the process in that side. We also have to put together an offering statement. It's a preliminary official statement. That's the information that goes out to the bond holders, to them to review the credit and demographics of the school district. Once those two things are completed, we would look to sell as early as, you know, early January. We have, if you assume tonight and you, there's a second part of what we're going to be talking about. If you move forward with what we're talking about, we'd be able to pull the trigger, you know, at that time when we see the market work. So the plan here is to kind of get everything done in the first, second week of January for step two. You have a meeting on the thirteenth. So if we happen to find things change dramatically, we'd be ready to come back, actually, and we could accept the bank proposal in this. So I think the timing looks perfectly clear, but we can kind of get everything done without having to lose any, lose anything. I should point out a couple of things I didn't bring up. One, there are two major conditions that are different between bond and bank loans. Bond issues generally have five-year call provisions. So essentially means you essentially have to wait five years to refinance for any of those savings. You could do it, but it makes it more difficult. The bank loan, in this case, Vist, offered a three-year call provision. So it's a little short. However, during those three years, they're actually allowing the district, if they wanted to, to use internal cash to pay down a loan of a million dollars per year for those three years. So you could, if you chose that loan, use cash to refinance, pay down that loan. But they, you know, they want to make sure they keep it, you know, for three years, but you can actually use cash to pay that down. So there's some flexibility for the bank loans, probably. Does anyone have any other questions on this? As you can see, we did get proposals from other banks, but they were clearly one as good as the other options that we got from this. So that said, the next couple of pages are really what the numbers look like at the current bond market. Again, you've seen this ten times. I certainly won't go through this with you, but again, based on current market conditions with the bond market, if things happen that were never going to happen, we would generate savings of one million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. At this point, we're recommending that you take the savings over a three-year period, which generates about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year on step two, which is a red on page four. And then from there, it's, you know, you could take a relatively around sixty, five thousand dollars per year, essentially, there. So again, a lot of savings on step two. Then finally, if we do move forward with step three, it's a little smaller transaction. We think you can generate, you know, close to four hundred thousand dollars with that. So all in, if all things happen, we've now guaranteed to ourselves at nine hundred thousand dollars at step two. So you could be at least, you know, one point seven-ish million dollars on all these refinancings. So this is, this is very exciting that we've seen proposals here.
I have a question and I have no idea where it belongs. Here it goes. We get state aid reimbursing. So this three-year wind call that we would have in savings, would that be, would the state aid change their?
Yes, so we have to put that in the budget. We're not paying as much debt service than your reimbursement is reduced.
So is this a, but is it still a positive event for us?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, the numbers that we're talking about here are net of all state aid. So as an example, I mentioned, I mean, overall, the state is authorized to give you a certain amount of state aid. They benefit from reduction of debt service costs. So after you finalize the transaction, there's another form that essentially gets sent to the state to tell them what happened, called Bank Com Part A. You'll see something relatively soon about this. You send that to them and let them know what happened. And essentially what they do is they just transfer the reimbursement rate from the old bond issued to the new bond issued. But they benefit from the reduced interest cost related to this. So they're happy, you're happy. But what we're talking about here, that's net of all the savings and net of all the savings reimbursements. You never get more, you always get less once when you refinance this.
So there was one year when we had to pay the state for a check for some kind of this thing that we did. This was a few years ago. Do you remember that?
We paid the state?
Yeah. If you don't, then I'll talk about it later.
I don't recall that. The only thing I recall is when our temporary rates, when we didn't receive a permanent rate for such a long period of time on a project and then once we received that, there was a lot of retroactive reimbursement due to the district. That's the only-
Okay, maybe that's what it was.
In terms of debt reimbursement, that's the only thing I recall.
Thank you. That's it. I'm out of the water now.
What we have to talk about tonight, and Peter will jump in, we've been talking about parameters resolutions. It is on your agenda. The concept is, obviously, we have bank loans in hand. We want the flexibility to move forward with the next two steps. This parameter's resolution will essentially authorize a high amount of borrowing, but it also sets a threshold of the savings. We set high interest rates. The purpose for both of those things are to connect it with the state to have it authorized and so we can make sure to meet those standards. The key to all these things is the savings threshold that you set. Because clearly, if you assume high interest rates, you're never going to save any money. So it's really about the threshold. As we've talked about, you have very strong savings on step two and step three, one of which you have a pretty good idea at this point at the bank loan. I believe you have some opinions on what that could be. Peter can certainly jump in on the legal side, but it's just a timing that goes along with getting approval from the state. This would give us that timing to start the process and ultimately be able to do the transactions over the next month or so to save the rest of this month. So that's, that's what we're asking you to look forward to tonight. But again, we've got the bank loans in place and we'll see where the bond market goes next.
We have two separate resolutions on the agenda, one for step two and one for step three. And these resolutions are similar to the parameters resolutions that the board has done before. So this is the first time you've proceeded down this path. It's benefited you before because it does add the additional flexibility of allowing Jamie to, you know, really time the market to best suit and best, you know, generate the best savings for the best part.
And I will point out on the presentation on page twelve and page eighteen, these are the examples of what this maximum schedule is. And again, as you can see, even though we're refunding a far less than we're talking about, you know, it's twelve something, twelve point six million dollars of principal that we're showing. And we're showing a six percent interest rate for step two. And the second is seven point two million dollars with six percent interest rate. So again, you're not really going to have that much in real life. We suggest for purposes of the state, similarly, that you don't pass. But I'll point you at those, which numbers to check.
And there is also a separate resolution in addition to the two that Peter mentioned to set the save, targeted savings. Historically, districts would use a three percent. But in this case, we know what the hedge or what the state's bank note would be. I did put some numbers in here, of course, except for the board to make a final decision. Eight percent on step two, minimum. And again, that provides flexibility. And step three, a minimum of six percent. They're more realistic.
Is everyone comfortable with the stance of moving forward with the bond issue and coming back? If there's some big change, we'll have in six years.
If you'd prefer to come? Questions? Thank you, sir. Mr. Hathaway, Teachers in the Parks.
Good evening, everybody. I think I've managed to work with all of you in one way or another. I'm here this evening to present about Teachers in the Parks. Really, what I was just hoping for was an opportunity to thank everybody for your support. There are so many people to thank. First and foremost, the district, the administration, for their support of the Teachers in the Parks program. Also, the Exeter Community Education Foundation. He joined forces with us a few years back and he's really given us a jumpstart for the program. The Exeter Dairy Queen, the Exeter Teachers Education Association. This year, we've been so blessed and I just wanted the opportunity to share some of our successes in this summer and kind of shine a light on the work that the teachers are doing over the summer. This year, we had two high school students prepare a video for us, Emily Corvine and also Owen Halsey. They came out to the park and also our community pool and our community library. And they put together a really nice highlight video. So just a really short video I'd like to show you and then really just an opportunity to answer any questions. What you have in front of you is our Teachers in the Parks survey results, our parent results from this past summer. The numbers are fine. The part that really touched me this year was the number of parents that have really write testimonials on our behalf and just give us some really positive feedback about, you know, what we can do and what we can change and how we can continue to reach children over the summer. So just going to show a really quick video and then I'll be on my way. Teachers in the Parks help children bridge the summer gap. We have two hundred and thirty-five kids, twenty-three teachers, and we are independently funded. We teach students of all academic levels. Our classes include math, math challenge, reading, and science. District were having a hard time reaching a summer, so we had to create a vehicle to reach them. So instead of bringing the kids into schools, we decided to go to them. So we meet them at the pools, we meet them at the parks, at the libraries, and then hopefully in the future, at the daycares or wherever else they play in the summer.
It's just wonderful to get reading in the summer. I recommend it to every parent to do this.
We asked kids what they liked about Teachers in the Parks.
That I liked to be outside, there's like a slower room.
And just kind of fun, just happy, get to learn.
Teachers in the Parks exemplifies how much extra teachers care about kids. This summer, we have twenty-three certified teachers now who have children.
More teaching reading. I have a group of eleven or twelve students and we're working on just all the basic reading skills, most of comprehension, fluency.
Making more on their math. It kind of, you know, because I'm a joint, they're not into it, so I can maybe introduce some of the concepts that are still learning next year.
Partnered with TIPS is the Give a Book, Get a Book program.
Okay, this is the Give a Book, Get a Book program sponsored by Teachers in the Park with a lot of help from the Exeter Library. And basically, the kids bring a book that they no longer want or need and they don't need it and they can take another book that they like too.
State Senator Juszczyk is a prominent advocate of Teachers in the Parks.
I think it's an outstanding program. I've always been, I was a former educator myself over a few years ago. I found the working gap, you know, over the summer. So many students losing their momentum and they may, and their classes. And I think it's very important that that way they can do something for those students, for all of them, but particularly for those that may have some challenges in learning. I think this is a serious problem. It's one that compounds over the years and it loses time. They also lose the opportunity. I've been involved since last summer, talking about lung racing, talking about how we can get this program replicated in other schools. Not only here at Berks County, but around Commonwealth, I think it's that good that it should be used elsewhere. I think that this program that we're executing, I think more parents, as part of this, is very, very important. Parents who engage in this idea, maybe a great idea to keep their kids busy over the summer. So I see this program go over and starting to mend in other school districts and hopefully stay wide as well.
Teachers in the Parks has created a system that we could really duplicate ourselves in any school district. All it takes is a bunch of caring teachers reaching children wherever they are in their communities. Teachers in the Parks is sponsored by the Exeter Community Education Foundation, Exeter Dairy Queen, the Exeter Towtrip Education Association, and Lasting Image. Anyway, I just really wanted to get the opportunity to share what's going on in the district over the summer and I'll honor it, to really serve the cause. So if you have any questions about the program, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you at this time.
So are you working with the new, are you going to be working with the new math program? And that's going to carry over into your conversations?
Certainly. The goal would be to support the Exeter program in any way we can. So if the math direction is shifting, you know, what we're going to tell our teachers to do in the park is also going to shift. Been working in the district, we've been allowed to use the teachers. The blessing of having the Exeter teachers in our parks is that they have access to the classroom and the materials, the non-consumables. Sorry, the, yes, the non-consumables, that they can use the manipulatives that are part of the program. And actually, it was a real blessing this year because a lot of our teachers were able to use their new math materials ahead of time. You know, I know Derek Denodio, Steve Dogwood, a whole crew then were able to try it out beforehand. And then talking to them this year, they said, hey, I remember this one from the summer. You know, it's been a help to our teams to be able to, you know, work with this.
Great music.
Oh, that was all of them. And that was it all. So compliments to our high schools of video.
Man, how many years are you doing this now?
This is my tenth year.
And teaching in the park?
Yeah, this is my tenth. It started on my parents' back porch. My first year teaching, I had a group of students that wanted to tutor together and I didn't want to tutor an hour at a time, six times. So I said, can we just get together? And I lived at home at the time because I was right out of college. So they came over, we sat on my parents' back porch. And my parents live in Lorraine Hollow, so, or Lorraine Orchards. So then we would walk down from Lorraine Orchards right to Lorraine Hollow Park. And that's kind of what gave me the idea. We have so many children sitting in our community over the summer, sitting at our parks, at our pools, at our daycares. So instead of trying to bring students in, you go out to them. You know, it's just a different philosophy over the summer. And that's, so I ran it by myself for the first six years. And then, you know, graciously, the district said, you know, can we offer it to the children in schools? And we did. Our first year, we had twenty-eight students. And we went from twenty-eight to about forty, from forty to seventy-eight, and then seventy-eight to two hundred and thirty-five this year, plus an additional seventy-five or so in our science classes. So we estimate this summer, the teachers were able to reach about thirty-five percent of our students over the summer in our, in our targeted grade levels, which was second through sixth grade.
And these are, so are they free to the students?
No, we do, we do have a charge because we do raise our own money. And this year, students paid about three dollars and fifty cents an hour for instruction, a total of about seventy-five dollars for the summer. But we did, but we were able to fundraise to help bring down that cost. And we also offer grants for children that qualify for free reduced lunch. Or truthfully, we had some, we had enough funding this year to offer it to anybody who requests- enough funding this year to offer it to anybody who requested either half off tuition or full tuition.
I think this is probably, just the numbers goes to show how successful your efforts. 10 years ago, well, 10 years later, you know, quite a great effort on your part, and then the teachers that went into it and, you know, decided to come along with you. So I think I congratulate you.
Thank you.
On your efforts, and the teachers.
And I am a small part of it. I was one of 24, I was the 24th teacher, then we had 14 additional teachers that volunteered on our libraries for our book swaps. Julie Klein is telling us, some of the research is saying that if you can just get lovely books in children's hands over the summer. So we had our librarians out there, we had our teachers out, at our pools, at our libraries, and we would help children getting just right books from them, and they could swap them throughout the summer.
Are you following any of these children as far as, you know, what their grades are like?
If I had the vision for it 10 years ago, we certainly would have done that. We've just started that process now.
Oh, you are, you're excited?
It was really cool, though, just to share a personal story. The first six children I kept in touch with, and one is now in the Marine Corps. We have a couple, one at Temple, a couple in Maryland. And they've sent me back and say, hey, how are the summers going? So it seemed to be something that they wanted.
Great. Thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you for the opportunity.
So last year, when you talked to us, you said you were going to have over 200 kids, and I thought that was wishful thinking. So now that you've proven your point, how many this year, in this coming set, 2015?
Well, I have Nick Korfos prediction, and I said, Nick, you know, we will predict 100% growth, so that's what we budgeted for. So we expected around 150. Nick said, we could really blow up if we, if growth came exponentially, and it happened. This year, I think we're going to have to cap it around 300 to 350, just because of staffing needs. So we're going to try and prioritize the children who need it the most, and then we're going to go from there. If we have enough staffing, we'll bring everyone we can onboard.
300 to 50?
Yeah. I think we're going to have to set the cap, and I think we can hit it.
Matt, certainly a successful program, and due in no small part to your own enthusiasm and foresight, so I do thank you for that.
Thank you.
And now, everyone that's involved, with your baby.
Well, I'll send them, I'll send them your thanks.
Matt, have you, with Senator Schleich's concept of, she thinks it's a good program, and, you know, that it could be outreach to other districts, have you kept in contact with her to get her to get on the ball on this?
Oh, certainly. We have, and actually, when David Boltman, the Assistant Secretary, came out to the district, and we talked about the idea, and he's been very interested, and we've just kept dialogue going about how we can shine a big old spotlight here on Exeter, and use it as the model for how to reach children over the summer. So that, you know, is a work in progress, and obviously, it's going to take some time. But yes, we have certainly tried to pursue that, and what that would look like in other places.
If we could just do some of the districts even within our own Berks County?
Oh, absolutely.
You know, I think that would be, you know, a great thing for the community as a whole, and the county as a whole, too.
Yeah, we would love to be able to, I mean, children are children, whether they're Mifflin children, whether they're Wilson children or Exeter children, and if we could figure out a tool and a vehicle to give them, we would love to be able to support them in that way.
Well, I'll talk to that Senator Schleich, I'll tell him to put her money where it might be.
Very good, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thanks for that.
Mrs. Gage.
Can we see your video again, Matt?
Thanks, Matt.
I like that Matt came in, and he didn't tell us through four slides.
Yeah, you're getting better at it.
Well, my holiday gift to everyone is that it's only 13 slides.
Do you have imagination?
There you go.
Did you say 13? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
But it'll keep growing as we get closer to budget time.
Could be a much luckier budget than the last one.
In your folders, I have placed the PowerPoint, copy of the PowerPoint presentation, and according to Act One, the school board can prepare a preliminary budget in addition to a proposed final budget, and Exeter has done that since the inception of Act One, to maintain the flexibility of, you know, applying for exceptions, and getting the most information available when we finally get to the point of adopting the final budget. So the January 20th would be the deadline to place a preliminary budget for public inspection, or adopt a resolution indicating that the school district would not raise tax by more, real estate tax by more than the index. The index being 2.5% for 1516, which is down from 2.7%, which was the index for the 1415 budget cycle. In terms of the additional tax revenue, that an index of 2.5% would generate, that's an adjusted index, the state index of 1.9%, it would generate an additional .78 mils. The value of our mil is 1,336,000, would generate an additional $1 million if the district would raise the index. So why go through the preliminary budget process? As I said, it provides flexibility. The governor, the new governor, has until March to present the state's budget, so it's one month later, so, you know, we will not know what's going to be the education budget or subsidies for our district until then, and then, of course, it has to go through the legislative process. Preliminary budget allows you to apply for the reform of exceptions. Right now, my estimate is that we do apply, we will qualify for special education exception, about 468,000, and the retirement contribution, approximately 400,000. We won't know what the healthcare cost increase is until March or April, so that's information that is necessary. What I'm building in now to the preliminary budget is eight percent, although they gave a range of eight to 10%. And our discussions about new staff requests have to continue, surprisingly, why, maybe I shouldn't say surprisingly, we received requests of about seven, value of the cost of about 707,000. Positions that have been vacated and weren't filled in prior years, we're trying to hold the line on cost, staff are realizing now that we need that body. And then there are some additional mandates that are requiring additional staff.
Seven hundred thousand?
700,000. So we've eliminated a couple, but we have to continue to discuss this, because that is a significant additional cost. Capital plans, as you'll see later, some things now have come on the radar, things that were not part of the long-range capital plan that Mr. Pitz keeps track of. So there has to be a lot of discussion there. And equipment replacements. Joe Way recently brought to my attention that Owatsu is getting out of the phone system business. That's the North American company, Icon Owatsu. So our older systems, which are eight to 10 years old, are going to have to be replaced, because there always going to be about six-month worth of parts to maintain these systems. So we have a lot of, we have a lot of things to juggle as we go through the process, which doing a preliminary budget allows you to get some flexibility. Also, capital funds, what's coming back to the district upon resolution of your one free contractor litigation, and how that plays into it is how we plan our whole capital project funding over the next few years, because that is a big chunk of money that we've used in the re-bid process. Basically, you know, the housing market, you know, the activity sustained, our building permits, last year to this year, we're down a little, but still, there is activity, which helps with, obviously, our interim real estate taxes, transfer taxes. Aldi's opening up soon, that'll add 754,000 of assessed value, which helps this situation where assessed value reductions, 72 for 2015, which was a loss of about 2.4 million in assessed value, and that equates to about 70-some thousand in reduced real estate taxes. But we have interims, quarterly interims, and I estimate those at 1.4 million per quarter. So in the end, or what I'm projecting now, is a slight increase of .26 in assessed value, so it's going up. It's nice that this, I think this is trending down. Sorry. So those are the things which help us to, going up a little versus going down. And this is our local revenue. In the estimate for this year, bumping up some sources by 150,000, and then in 1516 by 170,000. I mean, they're modest increases. The real estate tax is very modest, transfer tax is modest, but it is going up versus going down, as it did several years ago very dramatically. So looking at revenue, for this year, budget to estimate, the original budget, and what I'm estimating at this point in time, and things do change, and I have to watch the trend over the next few months, is 529,000 in additional revenue for this year from the original budget. I just indicated 100-some thousand due to local sources. The state, when we adopted, the board adopted the final budget, the Ready to Learn grant, the state's budget was in past, we ended up getting 235,000 more for the Ready to Learn grant. And also, the time the budget was adopted, we did not know what our Medicaid access revenue would be. So adding an additional 55,000, it's coming in around 90-some thousand versus 38,000.
Hands up.
All right, just seven more.
What slide are we on?
1516, retirement, payment, contribution. Here's the, that's where the revenue is going up the most, and it's a little bit of local revenue. So what about our expenditures? I have a lot of review work to do, different options. The budget, for the preliminary budget at this point, showing a $3.9 million increase. The estimate for this current year, we're actually faring a lot better, and I'll explain that in a minute. But here again, 2 million in benefits, 1.2 million in wages. Those are the largest drivers. Property has to do with, we have one quote on a telephone system, we also have the final rollout of the one-to-one, the three grade levels, additional grade levels in there. So how does your budget vary from what you, we adopted back in June, employee wages? This is information I did not have when the budget was adopted. We had two resignations during the summer of teachers who were at a high level of contract pay, and then we have 10 teacher meetings that have taken place this year. So as it works out, we're saving 123,000, and some of that is in benefits as well, because you have a situation where, obviously, with the resignation, new teacher comes in, you have a school at a lower contract pay, and then the substitutes are also at a low contract pay. So we've also reduced the special pay, retirement pay by 80,000. That's always a guesstimate on my part. I look at those that could retire, and try to guess who might, and reduce that number for this year, as well as for next year. We had a deaf student in our district last year, we budgeted, assuming they would stay with the district, well, they have relocated. So we have significant savings in this area for IU services, as well as what we had budgeted for life skills students attending IU programs, is not as much. So I'm adjusting the budget downward. Charter school tuition, we're looking at 99 students versus 110, so I brought that number down as well. The, the district's, the library school in a box with Dr. Miller is piloting, has, I believe, helped tame this line item in addition to BVA, Brandyland Virtual, or our own Exeter Virtual, has helped that. This item here, some math materials which were, excuse my spelling error, typo, they, there's a variance, there are some materials were received before July 1st, so they rolled into 1314. Here again, I recognize the bank loan, what's going to settle January 5th, in savings in interest and principal, in addition to reducing our reserve. So about 1.2 million dollars. Looking at 1516 at this point in time, as I mentioned, 707,000 in new contracts, new staff requests, and contract increases, which, those are negotiated. Eight percent healthcare premium, the retirement rate goes up to 25.85. Reduction in IU services this year to next, and that reflects bringing a transition program in house at the senior high school. Utilities, repair, projected increases, again, all of these have to be looked at and evaluated. And in the purchase service area, tuition, what is in the budget at this point is a reduction in those tuition costs related to private placements. This is a net increase year to year, and it really relates to what's in the budget for next year, is some English textbooks, as well as Algebra II and Geometry, and those estimates have to be refined. Some of this information was just coming in just a day or two ago. Again, I mentioned the laptop one-to-one, and the telephone system replacements. I do not have any of the step-two, step-three savings reflected in the budget. Wouldn't do that until it actually happens. And again, the difference year to year, major improvements from the general fund this year is 660,000. I've put in 550,000 for next year, but we have to have a lot of discussion about prioritizing Just to show you, what's highlighted in yellow, and these are only sorted by system field, no prioritization at this point. But these are the things that have requests made by principals, you know, we knew about the track, which really were not part of what we were looking at last year, excuse me, in the springtime of 2014. So we've added, and I'll point out that we've only put a placeholder in here of the underground tanks and the pumps at the gas station and the roof, that if, you know, for some reason we wouldn't move forward with a new transportation center, these two things have to be taken care of very soon. So we're going to have to really take a hard look at all of this, and how we're going to prioritize it, how we're going to fund it. And then here for your information purposes, is the total capital projects that will be upcoming in the next four years beyond 1516. So just going back to this slide to illustrate, and this is without the new staff request, that what the contractual costs are driving the increase in the 1516 budget. And this is net, the benefit, net of state reimbursement for bike and retirement, so we're adding one point seven million off of that with the contract increases. So, stepping back to thirteen fourteen and what the auditors had reviewed the other week with us, and we had, when we adopted the budget, my estimate was we'd be pretty close to balancing it. Well, after every, all transactions reviewed, accruals made, we ended up four hundred ninety-four thousand excess of revenue over expenditure. Stepping, going forward to fourteen fifteen, which I just reviewed, adopted it with a deficit of two point nine, now it looks about six hundred thousand, but again, you know, I will continue to watch this. Trying to get as close of an estimate as possible, because when I do sit in on a rating call with standard insurers, they do, you know, I have to share with them where I think we're going to be. And the assignments, some of them which, the laptop goes away in fifteen, this is fifteen sixteen, because it moves up into the actual cost, the textbooks which we have, that moves up into the actual cost. It's no longer in a holding pattern, we're actually going to do it. We will have to replace bus radios in two thousand and seventeen, I've added that. So, at the current tax rate and what's showing up in the preliminary, you know, this is the deficit at this point, this is the capital project money that I'm estimating for the end of this year, with the new money, the two point five. And again, depending on how we prioritize and fund, this could go down to four point five million. Before we get any money back through litigation, this fund will be down, you know, Watton Creek to two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So, these last few slides, the auditor handed out the very long eight and a half by eleven forms with all the data for the different school districts, and this is for you to take home and read. I just summarized some information, just that I thought would be helpful, it's pretty interesting, I just, you know, our deficit, excuse me, excess of revenue was this number, and these are the other districts. Some districts pay their debt service out of another fund, so they make that physical transfer, you know, annually. Some districts, probably looking at the Downingtowns and the Upper Bucks, which have windfalls of cash, and they move it to capital or debt service in future. So, my goal this evening, or, you know, hopefully your feedback, whether you should continue with the preliminary budget process, which would be adopted in February, February sixteenth or seventeenth is the adoption date. February seventeenth. Any questions?
One of these school districts announced that they were not going to exceed the index, and that they were not submitting the preliminary budget because they thought they could prepare better end result. Have you gotten the talk, I forget which one it was, whether it was Cleveland or Boone or...
Prepare better end result?
Yeah. I was just wondering if you shared, if they'd shared their philosophy to you so that I could be enlightened.
Yeah, but I could, I'll reach out to business managers and say, you know, what's your...
Yeah, I saw it in paper too, Bob, like...
Already for...
It was the end of last month, November, that they actually announced that they were going to stay under the index and...
And it depends upon the position of the school district, you know, could it be Mulever? I mean, they have over eight million dollars in committed funds for EASR, so they've actually were used as a model for, you know, for some of the schools at the state level, and Pazbo's analysis of the whole problem. So, it really depends upon, you know, your position, and what you've done to this point so that you know you're going to balance your budget.
Going to the old records and the ready giggle on to find out which school district it was.
But I did see worked up...
It is their fault, the issue's fault.
Yeah, and, you know, I...
Give me the index, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Now is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to make any comments. See no one leaping forward. We have two sets of minutes, November eleventh and the eighteenth. I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So, anything or second?
A motion and second. Any discussion or corrections? There are none, all in favor of accepting minutes, please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Treasurers report.
I move the budget before that's, you can attach this on IU.
Second.
A motion and second, discussion. All in favor, please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Stahl, please.
I move that the board of school directors approve budget transfers for the month of November two thousand and fourteen in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. That's an attachment five A.
Second.
A motion and second, discussion. Any none, all in favor, please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors exonerate Exeter Township's school district's tax collector from the collection of the remaining two thousand thirteen per capita due for hit for Exeter Township, consisting of one thousand four hundred and eighty-six delinquent per capita and six hundred and nineteen exonerated per capita bills, to ninety percent collection rate, and authorize the district to submit to the delinquent per capita bills for our timer associates for collection. For our year, consistent of eleven eighty-six delinquent per capita and seven eighteen exonerated per capita bills at a ninety-one point eight percent collection.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. All in favor, exonerating the tax collector and singing the bills to the perk timer, please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors ratifies the filing change orders in G-ten, G-thirteen, G-nineteen, G-twenty-one with a net total of a credit of two hundred and thirty dollars and nineteen cents.
Second.
A motion and second, discussion. All in favor of approving the change orders, please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors accept the fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand and fourteen auto report is repaired by mail, L O P, and authorize distribution of the report.
Second.
A motion and second, discussion. All in favor of, accepting the order, please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that we appoint the representatives, alternative representatives to A through E as listed on, is that five E and F? Can't find it. Yep, five E and F. So, actually, let me do, appoint the representatives, alternative representatives for A through E, and also appoint the committees one through eight, that's an attachment five E and F.
Second.
A motion and second. You'll notice, as part of discussion, you'll notice that we did away with District Growth and a representative to the scholarship committee. District Growth has not met many years, and no one knew what the scholarship committee So, I had built those positions. Any other comments or questions?
We also collapsed with technology.
That's correct, I'm sorry. On basis of recommendation, we have run technology under regulations since they are fused at the hip anyway. Any further discussion? All in favor of appointments, please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors designate business manager Ann C. Godish as the district's alternative management representative to the Berks County School District's health trust board of trustees. Ann C. Godish will attend meetings in the event that Dr. Elizabeth A. Weller is unable to attend a regularly scheduled meeting of the board of trustees, and will be authorized to exercise all the authority, rights, powers, and privileges that pertain to a trustee.
Second.
A motion and second, discussion. All in favor of the appointment, please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors authorize district administration to accept the proposal from School Operations Services Group, Inc., for per diem substitute support personnel. The hourly rate paid to SOS for substitute services will be fifteen dollars an hour. School Operations Services Group is a choice for the district's support personnel absence warrant coverage.
Second.
Any second, discussion.
Can someone explain an hourly rate for this person? Just, I assume it would be twenty-four hours a day?
Twenty-four hours a day?
Yeah, well, help me, who's getting this hour? I'm not sure, I understand who's getting the hourly rate.
School operations...
Never mind, I'm sorry, thank you.
It's just an alternative.
Got it.
We would only use it if we had someone out for a lengthy period of time.
For example, custodian out on a sick leave for an extended period, or a secretary, they approached the Berks County Schools, and it's an alternative because sometimes it's very difficult to find someone else.
Further discussion, questions?
Is this under the, the human resources domain?
Yeah, right. Yes, okay.
Substitute aides or substitute custodians if we have an illness for an extended period of time.
We've used accountants in the past, this is just an alternative, because we've had situations recently where we've had custodians extended leave, and with the trend is that absences, there's really, you know, gets to the point where things aren't getting done that shouldn't be getting done, and it would be nice to have a source or a resource out, you know, have a substitute. And they're trained, they do the training, that's one of the major factors here.
So, the people that they are replacing, what was usually their hourly rate?
It varies.
Depending on the position and also the experience of the person in that position, the length of tenure in the district.
So, we're only paying them fifteen dollars an hour, or paying the servants?
This company fifteen dollars an hour.
And for how many hours a day would they be?
Very, very different position.
It would vary depending upon the position. But they, their employees, SOS employees, their whole, majority will be full-time, they'll handle the benefits, et cetera. So, there's really no risk to us at all. It's just an additional source to go to when we need a substitute.
Do you, do you know, know offhand, Ann, if we're using accountants, attempts, do they have a flat fee like that, fifteen dollars an hour or whatever?
It depends upon the type of...
Different for different positions, but this is fifteen no matter what position or...
This is fifteen for custodians, aides, substitute aides, and secretaries. I'm for the service work.
So, so actually, they're being paid, the substitutes are being paid more than what maybe our staff that is contracted with us, you know, in those contracts are paying.
Well, those individuals who are employees of SOS are necessarily getting paid more per hour than ours to have. SOS obviously wants to make a profit, they're probably making about, those individuals, nine fifty an hour, ten dollars.
I'm going to be going against...
They're also, they're also paying any benefits associated with that. If you add the benefits for our employees to the twelve dollars an hour that we're authorized to hire at, you're going to have well over fifteen dollars an hour.
Well, I doubt they're paying a lot of good benefits, but that's maybe here earlier, but I would be more interested.
It's a good argument. Any further discussion?
The reason we're asking for the services, just in case we have people who are absent we need to replace on a temporary basis while the current employee is off work, correct? Because we don't have substitutes. So, frankly, I don't know why you're going against this, because it makes no sense.
Excuse me, don't we have substitute lists right now?
Not for these positions, not for the students.
Well, why not?
Because they're available.
They're not trained. They're not trained.
Any further discussion?
Does this School Operations Services Group, do they meet, does their staff meet all the clearances required by...
All personnel? Yes, we'll have current at one fifty-one, thirty-four, and one forty-one background for absences. They would provide that information.
Any comments or questions? All in favor of working with SOS, School Operations Services Group, please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approves payment to Joseph Cambria and David W. Cross at Esquire for interest at rate of six percent for twenty-one months in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-three cents on wages previously paid to Joseph Cambria.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion.
I'd just like to ask to Mr. Malte, I thought that when there's a litigation, that no one, the other party is not responsible for the payment to the lawyer.
This is interest, and it's just, it's, you know, the interest in the check is just being made payable to the attorney and his client, but it's not for attorney's fees. It's just interest on this, on the salary for delay in payment, that's all it is.
Oh.
It's not akin to...
Oh, it's, it's okay, all right.
Not for county fees, no.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approves a resolution in support of the education funding lawsuit, that's an attachment five J.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Any none, all in favor, please indicate, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors establishes a minimum present value debt service savings for the school district after payment of all cost of issuance related to the refunding of general obligation bonds, series two thousand and ten, at least eight percent for step-two, series A of two thousand and fifteen, and at least six percent for step-three, series B of two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
A motion and second, discussion.
Just pleased with the options that were presented. It's nice to know you have a fallback of saving a million dollars on overall money of less than three percent for a thirteen-year term. It's just fantastic, so, well done.
All in favor, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approves a parameters resolution to issue debt Series A of two thousand and fifteen in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twelve million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The funds will provide for the following: refunding an portion of the school district's outstanding general obligation bond, Series two thousand, and paying the cost and expenses of issuance of the debt obligation, see draft resolution attached in attachment five L.
Second.
And motion is second discussion. Any none, all in favor, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approves a parameters resolution to issue debt Series B of two thousand and fifteen in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed seven million, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The funds will provide for the following: refunding the school district's outstanding general obligation bond, Series two thousand and ten, and paying the cost and expenses of issuance of the debt obligation, the draft resolution attached in attachment five M.
Second.
And motion is second discussion.
Ann, are we ever going to be able to see the costs that it, that we pay to Mr. Jamie's firm for the issuance and all of these things?
Yes.
Would then with that one, would that occur?
I'll receive, there'll be settlement sheets, perhaps subsequent settlement costs, some individual fees that are paid for pay fees.
Further discussion? All in favor, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approves a donation of photography darkroom supplies to the senior high school from a local citizen, Budless La Fauci.
And motion is second discussion.
I have a question. Has anyone looked at these supplies to know whether they're suitable for the high school and worthwhile for us to accept?
Having physically looked at them from the description and having a conversation about, you know, what's included with Mr. Kane at the high school, he believes that they would be useful to the high school. So, you know, we're going to, and this is actually Mrs. Napoli, my secretary's pastor, who's moving into a different residence and the residence he's moving out of has the entire, is outfitted with an entire darkroom and all the supplies and trays and whatnot. And, you know, we can always use that stuff in photography classes, you know, we're always replacing things there and it goes very costly. So, you know, we may not be able to use every last thing, but I think there would be some things there that would prove useful, so we're gonna at least hopefully agree to accept them so, you know, we can go through and be able to determine what's useful to us.
Still developing, Phil?
Yeah, yeah. Well, they do, they do digital as well, but they also do, you know, they do the old-fashioned-
No, I can only say the last time I tried to buy film, it came to me.
Yeah, they use a number of different techniques and-
Realize Kodak can have a phone business. They don't produce them, they don't-
I do not know that, Mike.
I did, Donna, I asked Donna Napoli and the gentleman estimated a thousand, fifty-five dollars.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the darkroom supply donation, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approves the property tax refund to the property owner, William Nella Bruner, as a result of the borrowing can of the older mobile loan destroyed by fire, it's in attachment five L.
Second.
And motion is second discussion. All in favor, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Includes business funding.
Thank you, sir. Detective Bender, your first one.
I move the board of school directors approve or ratify the following appointments listed under Part A, number one, certificate staff, number two, two teachers, and number three, assistant super teacher staff.
Second.
And motion is second discussion. All in favor, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve or ratify the following request for change of status listed under Part B, number one, support staff, A through D.
Second.
And motion is second discussion. All in favor of change of status, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve or ratify the following request for leaves of absence listed under Part C, number one, A through C.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
And motion is second discussion. All in favor of approving leaves of absence, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve, offer a three-year contract to Dr. Beverly A. Martin, superintendent, beginning on July first, two thousand and fifteen, and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, under terms to be negotiated by the executive compensation committee and approved by the board.
Second.
And motion is second discussion. All in favor, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors offer a five-year contract, Ann C. Gaidish, business manager, beginning on July first, two thousand and fifteen, and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, under terms to be negotiated by the executive compensation committee and approved by the board.
And motion is second discussion.
I'm gonna be voting against this and certainly not, not voting against retaining Mrs. Gaidish's services. I disagree in principle about the length of the contract. I believe that it's bad business. I believe that at one point the Auditor General of Pennsylvania had warned school districts about entering into five-year contracts and that it's bad business practice. I don't think we should go there.
Most I wasn't sure about the length and so knowing that it should be three to five years by state code, I just put that in as a, you know, not knowing what the board would prefer, so that could certainly be altered.
Move to amend the motion to a three-year term?
Second.
I'll second.
What is, what is the code, Dr. Martin, is it?
The code does, the code does not specify for business manager. It specifies for superintendent, assistant superintendent, and so that's not parallel, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, yeah, but it's not by law, I guess, then. I wasn't sure about those positions.
Yeah, they're the only ones that are required by-
Yeah.
Superintendent.
Yeah.
Is a new superintendent, three years, is that the maximum?
Three is minimal.
Three is minimal.
Minimum is up.
Yeah.
Has the auditor general gone to get chastised, Mr. Deesmere, did you know him?
This was, this was General Wagner, it was not, it was not the current auditor general of Pennsylvania. But I just believe that it's, I just believe that it's bad practice to get into a contract for that length of time.
I don't disagree with you, Russ, either, and again, it's certainly nothing, I mean, you do a splendid job.
Yeah.
I'm more comfortable with three years, so, and again, that's nothing to do with why I'm down from just from it.
Is there any further discussion? We're now voting on, we will be voting on the revision to indicate three years versus five on this guy's contract. Any further discussion? All in favor of a three-year contract for Miss Gaidish, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And motion carries. Now we will be voting on whether to offer Mrs. Gaidish that three-year contract. I do have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of offering a negotiating contract with Mrs. Gaidish as the business manager, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the salaries and wages of the following personnel be established effective the date indicated. Dr. Beverly Martin, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, effective July first, two thousand and fourteen. Dr. Todd and Davies, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, effective April second, two thousand and fifteen. Dr. Elizabeth A. Weber, one hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars, effective January fifth, two thousand and fifteen. And Mrs. Ann C. Gaidish, one hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, effective July first, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
And motion is second discussion.
Yeah, I'm also gonna, I'm gonna be voting against this, but I would prefer if we could pull Mrs. Gaidish out. I believe Mrs. Gaidish is, the amount for Mrs. Gaidish, I think, was a promise from this board the last time, and I believe that we should keep that promise. My concern about the other salaries, when we looked at these, we looked at comparables and included the comparables were salaries from metropolitan Philadelphia, Montgomery, Chester, and Bucks, Delaware counties. And I don't, I don't believe that's an accurate or a true assessment of, and nor should I do, nor should I believe they should be considered in salaries in Berks County. So I'm gonna be voting against it, but I would like Mrs. Gaidish to be voted on separately if we could.
Any further discussion?
I think that is an amendment to the-
Is there a second to splitting out the Mrs. Gaidish from the other beneficiaries?
Second.
And motion is second. All in favor of voting separately, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Like a show of hands, please, all in favor, please raise your hand. That's five, and motion carries. So we are now voting concerning the salaries of Dr. Martin, Dr. Davies, and Mrs. Weber. Dr. Weber. Any discussion on those two?
Yeah, I have another comment I'd just like to make. I think that, I think that school districts have exacerbated their own problems because what we seem to do, and it certainly has happened on the boards that I've sat on. What we seem to do is we seem to drive up people's salaries right as they retire and it pumps up their average. I don't think it's fiscally responsible. I think it's nice, I think it's nice that you do it for folks. I just think that we, we tend to be our own worst enemies. In recent conversations in Harrisburg about these kinds of moves, you know what? The legislators all believe that we just were spending like drunken sailors. And this is one of the ways, this is one of the things that we're doing.
But I believe we just unanimously approve the key to superintendent.
Yes.
We want to force her into retirement.
I will.
The fact that she's close to retirement should have, you know, that's almost age discrimination in a way, when you think about, you know, this thought.
I just questioned the motive of what we were doing.
Well, your comment is noted, however, if you recall the discussions on this in executive session, there was no discussion of retirement. It was meeting the priorities of a, or providing a salary that was competitive with other districts. So I, I find your allusion to building up for retirement to be frivolous, quite frankly, because it's never discussed.
I'm just questioning the motive, that's all.
Well, it wasn't questioned when the decision was made, and I find that hugging. So any other comments?
Yes, one comment that Mr. Deesmere made was regarding the fact that we looked at surrounding county salaries to identify what the rates we should be at. And whereas we may have used that for some positions where there was a lot, there were not a number of individuals with similar type of titles, but it came to an individual who was a superintendent or assistant superintendent, we were specifically looking inside of Berks County and looking where the median was at that area right now. And also looking at the total population stood by to see if we were paying accordingly. And that's how we came to the area we're at right now with the salaries we're looking at.
Any further comment or discussion?
I'd just like to say that I think the salaries have to be viewed in the context of a seventy million dollar organization. I think from any business standpoint, those are not high payouts. Again, we're running an organization this size. And second of all, while I may disagree with some folks on this board about how to assess the school district's success, I think regardless of how you want to do it, I think the school district is meeting or exceeding those academic hurdles that we set. So I'm strongly in support of this process.
Further comments? Hearing none.
I do want to say that I will be supporting this, these salary schedules. I, as Mr. Deesmere said, I do think Dr. Martin is a great leader here in this, in this community. We are very, very good at having someone like she to lead this district. I think Mrs. Weber, Dr. Weber does a great job, and I also, I think Dr. Davies is coming along very nicely too for his second year. So I will be supporting them. I think sometimes, you know, I, I kind of question this myself because there are people in our district that are taxpayers that certainly aren't making this type of salary, but they do not have the educational background and the years of experience and the dedication to the education profession which it takes to become superintendent or assistant superintendent. So I congratulate them for their great work and hopefully they will continue on.
Any further discussion or comments?
I just want to thank the members of the executive compensation committee, Dr. Bender, Judge Staub, and rest of the board for your involvement in reaching the resolution on this and also look forward to your support as we move forward on the new negotiation with Dr. Martin.
Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the salaries established for Doctors Davies, Davies, Martin, and Weber, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. We are now considering the salary of Mrs. Ann Gaidish, business manager, as we're checking, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
I just want to say, as the treasurer of this organization, I work closely with Ann each month on reviewing the bills, and she is on top of everything, any questions I have to ask of her, she readily answers them, so I am very supportive of the raise that she's going to make.
Further comments? All in favor, please indicate. So we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve the following staff conferences listed under Part F, number one through five.
Next second.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I have, I just have a question, frankly, about, and it's nothing against what Mr. Dower is going to go to, the principles of engineering course training, I just wonder if this course is offered in the summertime. I mean, I'm just trying to see, I mean, frankly, I still think the cost is out, I mean, five thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars, that it can't be offered at some school like Drexel or Lehigh or-
I know.
You know, or some other great school in our, I mean-
It's not.
Wyler, Bucknell, Penn State, so I continue on my list of great engineering colleges. You know, I mean, it just seems outrageous to be spending this amount of money on one course for one individual. Will that person come back to train to rest in state?
They can't. In order to run this program, I'm not jumping anytime, they must be trained by Project Lead the Way. We can't just do the turnaround training. It's part of the agreement that we have with them in order to call it a Project Lead the Way STEM program.
No, it's, it's great training. It's about ten days of intensive training and I think it's well worth the money because what we're getting is a very consistent program. It's something that has been tried, it's proven, and our- Um, it's something that has been tried, it's proven, and our results can be compared to other districts across the nation, and it's, it's very vetted, and it's excellent. So I would say this is money well spent.
Do they offer it during the summertime?
They do. The problem is though, and we've, we've tried to get our teachers to go during the summer, but it's a, the teachers, um, aren't mandated to go during the summer, and there was an issue with childcare for this particular teacher, that he was only available during the school year. And in the summer, I don't know if it's a much of a cost savings because of that, because we ended up having to pay them a salary to, to go. So we had to pay them a per diem rate, uh, to attend, and, and so in some ways, you know, it's probably a break even type of thing. So we're just very appreciative that he was able to make the trek down there. Uh, we do have two more teachers that are planning on going to Bucknell this summer for training in, in similar courses, and our goal is to, uh, continue to build up that program, the capacity of our, our teachers to teach STEM classes, so that as the program grows, we're gonna have competent and well-trained teachers to deliver that program.
Does it declare about foundations benefits?
Yes, we're very fortunate to have that kind of support, and they're getting continued here.
I didn't know, all I saw was number, I knew it was ECEF as we were talking, I'm like, I'm up my money.
Does that mean I can no longer rely on your, uh, second if I heard if it says ECEF?
Yeah, my, my second's even stronger now. It's a different currency.
Any further comments or discussion? All in favor of the, uh, staff conferences, schools, please indicate so they say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That completes personnel.
Thank you, Dr. Bender. Ms. Ketchus, do you have questions?
Item A, just reporting on a field trip in the 60-mile radius, item 125. She had a good time.
Item B, I move calling field trip, which is beyond the 60-mile radius, be approved of the senior high TSA club members to travel to Stroudsburg High School for a competition on February 21st, 2015.
Second.
Is that really more than 60 miles, Will?
Motion is second, any discussion on, uh, the trip to Stroudsburg? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so they say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, I move that the Board of Directors approves the request of Terry Watts to allow her son, senior Dalton Schwab, to attend at the University of Senior High as a non-resident student for the remainder of the 2014-15 school year, according to a policy 202, and I think we said this was a student, a senior.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion?
I, I'd just like to say, every time we do this, I'm grateful that we have this policy. I think it's in the best interest of students, and I'm glad that we can extend that offer, with that charging provision or whatever is on the district.
Hi, Dr. Martin, how long has the student been at our school?
Um, I don't know if he started in kindergarten or if he came somewhere along the way, but he's been a, a student at our high school at least during his years, during his high school years.
I have to comment, uh, the same with Mr. Deesinger. I think it is a great program to allow, for us to allow the student to finish his, his, um, schooling here. Um, it brings, um, more stability to the student rather than going, you know, into another school district for a year and trying to make friends and everything else, which can affect their academic performance when they, when they have some of the social things going on that maybe they can't connect with their, yeah, their student body. So I think it's a great program, and thank you for having me.
Definitely, and it, um, well, it's the board's policy, but, you know, it's, uh, it's great because it's also conditional. Uh, so if, you know, they must maintain decent grades, they must, uh, have good attendance and, uh, good behavior, uh, or else, you know, all bets are off, and they'll be asked to leave. So it's also an incentive for them to, you know, maintain, uh, their good standing in high school.
And then is the parent liable for the transportation to and from?
Yes, yes, always.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor of, um, Mr. Schwab, attendance, please indicate so they say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Deesinger, thank you, Ms. Ketchus. Mr. Deesinger, curriculum programs?
I left their buying books, they're not telling me, you know what I mean, right? No, no report.
Mr. Japini, you no longer have a.
Committee report.
Committee report.
Sadly, sadly, it's the last time on the agenda. If I have to report other than I will, say that I appreciate the work that they've done, still under one program, and, um, glad to see that it's part of our system.
Mr. Deesinger, I think you wanted to jump in again?
I just wanted to talk about the curriculum committee, and, and that is that we did have a meeting on December the 9th. Uh, we discussed in length, there was a presentation by Mr. Flann, the junior high school principal, and some changes that they're planning, uh, in the, uh, schedule of the day at the junior high school. I think those changes are exciting, and they, uh, I, I think the changes will foster better performance in mathematics and language arts. And they've had a good time, Flann?
Thank you, sir. BCTU, we had no meeting this month, we accomplished nothing except a Christmas party where Santa appeared and.
Really?
Gave out candy and junk to the kids. No, I was not the Santa.
Get out of your shell, come on.
Uh, athletic committee, Mr. Staub.
A couple things, uh, first off, recognize the cheerleaders, they, um, on Saturday, they won the District 3 Cheerleading Championship. And also on the same day, I wanna, again, reach out and thank Mo's. They have become a tremendous partner of ours in the athletic, uh, especially the athletic arena. On Saturday, they had a, an Exeter Athletic Day, where 100% of their profits from the day comes to the athletic department, and we're talking thousands of dollars. Um, I've had the opportunity to talk with Travis, I go in, have lunch there in Athens, so he's smart, he definitely brings business in, but he has been, he is, uh, the new business over there, and, and there's others that do it as well, but they have really, uh, come to the forefront, and I think we should recognize them and, and thank them. Um, also, on Friday, the, the follow information came out for athletes of the year, so if, if I, if I go into everybody who was recognized, we would be here tomorrow, and I have to be in Rehoboth Beach at noon, so I'm just gonna go with players of the year, first team stuff. But, uh, for player of the years, we had, player of the year, we had two, uh, two folks recognized, Sarah Leslie in volleyball, and Ally Snyder in girls tennis. Um, players of the year for offensive and defensive lineman of the year, Michael Mett, if you've heard about Michael, he's, uh, tremendous opportunities for him. He's getting recruited by everybody, and I think just last week, we had, uh, Maryland, Penn State, Duke, and Michigan. Unfortunately, it was Brady Hoof's last, uh, official visit. So, um, that was that for, for football. And for Casey Whitmore, uh, passing, sorry about that, and cross country. Uh, soccer, we had three folks, three, Hunsinger, or four, excuse me, uh, four, Nick Lineback, Jonah, who's he, just screwed that one up. What happened to Jim Smith? Uh, Joe Mitchell. Girls Valley Boys Team, we may be here for a while. Sarah, again, Danielle Faust, Gabby Stick, Shannon Restrepo, and Jason Grove, and I know a bunch of those girls will be heading on for, um, the scholarships as well. Oh, and sponsored by St. Joseph's Regional Health Network Kids Talk.
It is the only reason it still goes on, because they were gonna cancel it about eight years ago, and we just, we, all these.
You better watch yourself, the people at Mo's told me that they think Staub, they think Staub was responsible for that sinkhole, and it's the only reason they continue.
Thank you, Ms. Staub, and thank you, St. Joseph's Medical Center. Township liaison, since we're no longer district group. Uh, the township continues to steering committee addressing zoning and taxation in the hopes of, uh, attracting new businesses into the year. Uh, we can't, we basically do a consultant now, which is an impediment to our progress.
Is there any comment really, the fact, is that the report you're talking about, or no?
No, it's not that one, no, it's, it's, um, I think that. That was supposed, that was published, the changing of the sign was published Monday night, after the 30-day commentary, because it's a revision to the code.
You're amazing.
Hey.
I tried to get it on the thing.
Well, I forgot to announce, we're gonna have an athletic committee meeting on Monday, the 12th, is that the date? At six, six o'clock here, and we will have, um, a marketing firm that we had met last time, they're gonna come and present, uh, January 12th is the Monday, and we will be hearing their presentation on potentially taking over the marketing for advertising through the district as far as generating additional naming rights and things of that nature. So, if you have some time, come on in.
Public relations, Mr. Green.
Thank you. You may have noticed there's a, an attractive new display here in the showcases, and I don't think, uh, Owatton Creek has taken credit for it, but this is all the work of students from Owatton Creek Elementary. And also, in early November, again, the Exeter Lions Club reaches out to us to give them, um, some input for families who might benefit from food baskets during the holiday time. And the guidance counselors, the SAP folks, and the, um, nurses put their heads together, and we submit names, uh, to the Lions Club, and, uh, this Saturday, they will be delivering food baskets to, uh, 42 families throughout the township. So it's something nice that they do, and we thank them for, for doing that for our family.
Thank you, sir. BCTC, Mr. Deesinger.
The report we're looking at, I don't know, I guess all of you know it, I guess find it, Bob Leese is the executive director, uh, has announced his, uh, intent to retire, and, uh, we did, at the last meeting, form a, uh, search committee, and, uh, should be interesting.
Mr. Brady, facilities.
That's fine, there's nothing to report, however, if it works with everyone's calendar, I am going to look for a meeting on January 7th at 6:30 PM at the Rink, all metrics. January 7th, 6:30.
Is that Wednesday?
Yes.
Letting you know.
Ms. Audit Committee? Payment requests, Mrs. Brennan?
I'd like you to change on, uh, on payments for the, uh, attachment, uh, XVII.
Second.
I'd like to ask you a question, um, I had asked you on Friday, uh, concerning, um, $53,100, I don't see on this, on this, on this mailing, it was in Friday.
Well, you would have received a list of Friday's attachment, and then, and the denda is done today, which is part of the pink, that pink handle.
Okay, I said, you know, did you, did you get my, did you get an answer from you?
You had asked about the speech therapist, you'd asked how many students. Uh, Dr. Miller shared me 370 students currently, but it is, uh, constantly changes because students, uh, exit the program, or new students are referred in to it. Um, I didn't find the email yet from the vendor, uh, as far as you had asked how they monitor the therapist, the contract at the earliest time. Uh, but basically they have thresholds of efficiency.
Are they contracted for, uh, do, uh, they're here in the school, right?
Yes.
So do they have a planning period, like teachers have a planning period?
You know, like Dr. Miller.
They have a time when they work directly with students, and then they go for indirect time. Um, so some of the indirect time is their planning time, yes.
So how much is, do they have like 40 minutes or whatever a teacher has?
Uh, it's not, it's not handled like the teachers' work, it's contractual, there has to be a planning time every day, uh, they see their students, and then, uh, they're writing IPs, they're doing evaluation, they're getting ready for their, um, providing their services or their therapy, all of that, it's, it's more, it's more, uh, more properly worked as indirect services that incorporates all of those kinds of services, aren't direct services, which is, and it varies day to day, how much that occurs.
And, uh, are they contracted for like seven and a half hours, or can they extend to 10, 12 hours, or?
They're, they're contracted for, uh, the number of students that they serve, uh, they pretty much try to stay with the state guidelines, and approximately 60 students per caseload, um, and they do, they do try to stay with them, they, for 40 hours, 40-hour week, kinda work week.
Very good.
Could I, sorry, I just wanted to point out, by Dr. Miller moving to pediatric services, our budget is actually probably gonna be less by 100,000 compared to the past couple years. So it's just pulling, you know, tightening up the service.
Well, we've had, we've had, um, total 40 checks of $141. We had a total list of payments from the general fund of $2,567,414, uh, from the Capital Projects Fund, $4,090.50, and the Owatton Creek Elementary School Fund, $32,827.7. So, um, I have a second to pay these bills.
We have a second already?
Let's just call it there.
I know you did. Do you wanna call a question also? All in favor, please indicate so they say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Martin.
Thank you. Uh, on behalf of myself and my colleagues, I'd like to thank the board for your support and generosity in approving the salary increases, and also for, uh, the offering of additional contracts to myself and to Mrs. Guidish. Uh, I'd like to also remind the board, I know it's on the dates to remember, but I'm reminding myself and the process, and, uh, anybody else in the audience who plans to be there, that our workshop meeting on January 13th will be held at BCTC East. So don't come here, we'll be here. Also reminding, uh, members of the media who are here as well. And, uh, it will begin, for those who can make it, we will have a dinner at 5:30, and the board meeting obviously will start at 7:00.
Well, word is this way.
Is that the only, the only?
The only one, yeah, yeah. If anyone needs, if you haven't been there, you need directions or anything, I can send those out as well. I'll, I'll verify with them, but we had it all settled, so we just haven't talked about it.
I, Bob mentioned the other night.
Did he?
They're, they're, they're set, but you probably.
Good, yeah, I'll touch base with the secretary over there. Um, also wish everyone a happy holiday season, and, uh, hopefully, uh, very great start to the, can't wait, I'm saying, 2015. Have a great little break, really will be a break for everybody.
Are there any other matters to come for the board?
Oh, just, uh, just, I, I have FYI for everybody. Had an opportunity to speak with the governor-elect, and, uh, the, uh, revenue numbers just get worse and worse in Harrisburg, but I, I thought this was an interesting twist. Um, state police and that freon manhunt. 1,100 overtime hours, over budget. Put that on it, and they had 500 troopers, and they project that they lost $7 million in tickets that hadn't been written.
It just keeps getting worse.
This is tomorrow, Dr. Staub.
Uh, just a, uh, two quick points, uh, just so that, uh, the board can think about something. A couple of weeks ago, during one of our board meetings, uh, I didn't look at it at the time, but as I was going through my papers today, I saw it, there was a handout about the public pension fund, and I don't know where exactly that came from, a presentation, but I would, I would call everyone's attention to it, because it, I think it highlights a very important. very important function that we are attempting to perform here on the board. If you read through the chart, as of two thousand, the public pension fund was fully funded to the tune of a hundred and twenty percent of liabilities. And of course, now, by virtue of an asset allocation and some missteps, again, I realize in hindsight, but, you know, we're down to sixty percent funded. But had somebody, I think, used some common sense, bought outside the box, and asked if we're fully funded by a hundred and twenty percent, what is it going to get us if we're funded by a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty percent? We're still going to pay out these benefits. So, that's why I say I think sometimes we really do need to think outside the box and ask some difficult questions. But the, the public pension fund issue could have been solved had somebody just held up a timeout in two thousand. I just find that so interesting. But I'm a little conflicted on the recommendation on the bond versus the loan, and I just wanted to say that the reason I'm conflicted is because of the prepayment option on the loan, and I guess I want everybody to think about that. Maybe I've agitated enough that Jamie was able to insert it into the proposal or have it come back in, in the, in the offering from, from this bank. But this is a tremendous opportunity, potentially for us to take a million dollars of cash that we literally have sitting in the general fund, and use it to prepay our obligation. And over a thirteen month period, I think the numbers are pretty easy, we could save something in a neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars on a recurring basis. You know, I think some of these things are, are interesting and exciting, and again, I think that we're kind of pushing on the margin a bit, but it's going to give us some of these opportunities that I think we really need to consider. And I, and I will echo Joe's comment about the rate. I mean, these are tremendous rates. We're going to look back on this and wish that we would have done more, but I think this is definitely moving in the right direction.
Any further issues, Green?
I just want to say that in the paper this past week, there were five hundred students that graduated from Quistown University.